I don't try really good.
I said I'm cleaning up things in church. I said I'm cleaning up things in church. graduate from.
Let's send Brody.
I want to get done quick.
I don't think I'm going to be working on it.
Remember that now.
That'll work. I'm going to go tonight and do that. I know where they might be.
That's all right. Note in our phone. And then remember what it is for you next.
That to be.
Never.
I'd like to call the Thursday, August 14th, 2025, regular Nottaway County School Board meeting to order. We will have a moment of silence, followed by a prayer if you choose to pray with us, followed by that pledge of allegiance. And we appreciate if you're able to, to stand for that.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you tonight once again for allowing our Nottaway County School Board to come together to conduct the business of our county schools. Thank you tonight for our superintendent, for our clerk, for our board, for the staff that are here, our principals. Thank you for the citizens that are here tonight. We pray, Father, that we might have a smooth beginning to our school year next week. As you will continue to guide the students, the bus drivers, the staff, the cafeteria workers, the custodians, all of our children, that you might guide them each and every day. We thank you for your grace, and we thank you for your mercy, and we thank you for your wisdom. In the mighty name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the church public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
We'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
There are no awards and recognition at this time. I do not believe there was anyone that signed up for delegations from the public. I will ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda, items A through Q. There will be a separate motion for item R.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item R is the appointment of the primary and alternate student liaisons. Dr. Martin.
Yes, so I'm not sure if it's in your copy of your alternate packet, but it's on the online agenda this evening. The high school has two student liaisons. The first one is the primary, which is Avery Clyburn. She is a senior this year at Nottaway High School. And the alternate is Anna Lee. She is a junior this year at the high school. So they both are very eager and excited to be the student liaisons. And Ms. Clyburn would start next month.
Thank you, ma'am. Have a motion to approve our primary and alternate student liaison.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign. The resolution to rename the Nottaway Football Field. I'll be. You'll give me a moment. I will read the resolution. Whereas Coach Joe May was the football coach at Nottaway High School from 1970, when the high school opened, until 2009, and served as the Nottaway County High School Athletic Director from 1991 until his retirement in 2009. Whereas Coach May's overall football record was 285 wins, 142 losses, and seven ties. Whereas Coach May, excuse me, Coach May's teams won 15 Southside District Crowns, six regional titles, and two state championships in 1991 and 1998, while finishing second in the state playoffs three times. Whereas Coach May was named Virginia High School Football Coach of the Year in 1991, 1997, 2005, and again in 2008. Whereas Coach May coached in six Virginia High School Coaches Association All-Star Games. Whereas Coach May was introduced, excuse me, Coach May was inducted into the Virginia High School League Hall of Fame in 2003. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Nottaway County School Board names Nottaway County Football Field, Coach Joe May Field, this 14th day of August, 2025. May I have a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign. Thank you. The Burkeville Elementary School. We have discussed the Burkeville Elementary School several times. And when I say several times, over the past several months. We keep pushing this off for another month. I would hope that tonight this board would determine a date. I will suggest one. It could be modified. I would suggest that the board consider closing Burkeville Elementary effective November 15th of the current year. Now, I would propose a motion to that effect. And once there is, if there is a second, we can discuss it. And if we need to change the dates, because there's a majority would think that their November 15th is inappropriate, we could have that. But it would require a motion for that kind of discussion. May I have a motion to close the Burkeville Elementary School effective November 15th?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion.
I would like to propose a later, a little more later date, right after the election. Maybe I'm out, but maybe like January or something. That's not appropriate. That's fine too, but that's what I think. We should extend it out to January.
I was thinking more along end of January is what I was thinking as well. January 30th or January 31st.
And we split the difference, January 15th.
January 15th, 2026.
That would be good, because it would give enough time for everything to wrap up.
January 15th.
And that's what I was most concerned. Just let everybody just, you know, get their stuff together and then, you know. So I'll go with January 15th.
Then I would propose an amended.
Let me just outline some.
I have a question as well.
Dealing with the date, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to propose we amend the motion to indicate that the closing date would be January 15th of 2026.
So moved.
Is there a second to that?
Do you have a question?
Well, let him finish the question.
Second.
Any additional discussion?
The only question that I have is knowing that, you know, like Bill, that you really, you know, the electoral thing a lot better than I do. Does that impede with any of the dates upcoming or any of that?
No, the election, if my memory serves me correctly, early voting starts first part of September.
And we probably will not have anything until primaries in June.
Yeah, I would think so.
The November election, then Canvas usually takes the balance of the week. Usually takes the balance of the week. It might not take the entire, but the balance of the week. It would give everyone that has something to do with the school other than those of us in the school system that don't use it, the opportunity to relocate. And especially for Feed More, which may require a longer lead time to find another location. But this January 15th gives them a number of months in which to do that.
Would that be everyone has vacated the premises on before January 15th?
On or before the 15th. Now, as I understand it, just to add, and I could be corrected if I'm wrong, Feed More is on a month-to-month. The registrar, and I'll try to be politically correct in this. The registrar didn't want to move, doesn't want to move. The Electoral Board hasn't given him direction to move. And the county has a place for him to be relocated to. And to the best of my understanding, the Attorney General did not complain or reject the move. And the Virginia Department of Elections did not say it could not be held in that location. Are there any other discussions or questions?
I have one after Bill.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. The only thing that I want to say is this would still allow in the event, because we all received the one-to-five-year plan presented by Dr. Green. So this would still leave an open in the event that she's able to make a feasible presentation to us, to where she could assume the expenses of the building. And then moving forward with the community. I know that Heather, we've talked about, you know, different accounts that can be set up that where it could be self-sufficient and we not have to take it out of our budget. Because I recognize the very important need of having a community center, having access. But I also recognize that we are fiscally responsible for the students and the taxpayers. And that we, as things are now, a lot of services for our students are currently in question because of funding. And we need to pinch every penny that we can. And that's why I wholeheartedly support this. But the question is, so this does still leave the door open in the event that she's able to make a presentation that if the board agreed upon, then we could move further with that. Is that correct?
Well, as long as the school system still owns the building.
Correct.
I have gone over the transformation project, the seven, eight, nine pages that were presented. And it's in rather significant detail. But I'm not sure that any of us on this board would know how to address Medicaid or Medicare billing or any of those other kinds of things that are here. And there certainly wouldn't be a swimming pool.
That would something, that would have to be something that the facilitator would have to be managing and not us. My biggest thing is making sure that A, we're protected and B, you know, protected of all liabilities and B, we're fiscally protected.
That's right. That's right.
Mr. Alva.
Well, with regards to Feed More, and I agree that that is definitely something that is needed in Nottaway County. However, we are in the educating business. We are not in the feeding business. And we should not be involved in that in any way, shape, or form other than something possibly like we are renting the facilities for that purpose. But past that, we have no business being involved in it. I think we've got enough on our plate without having to worry about that.
I appreciate that. And I know that Mr. Alva made two recommendations at the last meeting. One was the Wilkinson Warehouse. At least that's what I'll call it. The facility that was adjacent to where they had their tire manufacturing facility that is now in Blackstone. And the, I'll call it the gym. It could have been something else that's just as you're coming down 460 into the town of Crew. It's on the right-hand side of the road that appears to be vacant. I don't know who owns it.
That's owned by.
It's a church.
That's owned by our church.
Well, then hopefully, if that's available, Feed More can discuss a deal with your church.
Well, I'm sure there are many places that they.
Well, that's just, those were the two that were recommended. Any other?
Yes. Let's presume that at some point we vote to dispose of Burkeville Elementary. What do we need to do to make that happen? We need Board of Supervisors approval, I believe, to sell it. Who gets the money? And there are several questions along those lines.
According to the. I didn't mean to interrupt.
Go ahead.
According to the Code of Virginia, whenever a school board determines that it has no use for some of its real property, the school board may sell such property and may retain all or a portion of the proceeds of such sale upon approval of the local governing body. And after the school board has held a public hearing on such sale and retention of proceeds, or may convey the title to such real property to the county or city or town comprising the school division. Or if the school division is comprised of more than one county or city, which doesn't apply to us, the school board shall have the power to exchange real and personal property, to lease real and personal property, either, and so on. So yes, it would require approval by the Board of Supervisors, which would be different than what has happened historically, which is simply to declare its surplus and hand it off to the county.
Okay, well, the next question then is, do we have any idea of who might want to buy this? What type of organization, governmental, whatever? And what might we realize if we sold it? And I don't know that that's been looked into. I tried to call a couple of realtors, but they don't seem to be interested in selling real estate. So I didn't talk to them.
The only thing that I can share with you is what the Commissioner of the Revenue indicates that the property has a current stated value on the books of $2.1 million.
Well, I mean, they can put any MIP price on there they want, but until we have a buyer, that doesn't mean.
Appreciate that. But we aren't anywhere near close to having the discussion on going after a.
So we can pay taxes.
A firm, real estate, or any of those kinds of things. Or even talking to the Board of Supervisors, asking for permission to engage one of these activities.
Right. Well, and also an idea that I had, and I know all of you made known of this idea, that we reopen Burkeville as a primary school and that we would reapportion the primary schools to include up through grade five. And then we would have to redistrict, I guess that's the appropriate term, on where all of our students in grades pre-K through five would attend primary school. Now, and that would, my idea was that that would free up the intermediate school for such things as the school board office and an alternative school. Now, I did have a discussion with Dr. Martin shortly after she took office. And one of the things was that possibly we could get temporary school buildings to house the fifth grade at Crew and Blackstone. And which I think is a great idea to pursue. Is that still something on the table?
Yes, so if I may, Mr. Chairman, I would offer to the board to let the school board office staff present you with a couple of ideas or proposals as to what we feel once you close, some options that you could possibly consider and look at. I would also ask that you allow me to contact our school board attorney just so that I can make sure that we have everything laid out the way that maybe we should as we move forward after this with those options to make things, make sure they're in line. But then we can work as a staff to give you some proposals and some possible considerations and options as you move forward after the initial closure, if that would work for y'all.
And will that include expanding the scope of the alternative school?
Yes, so I did share, and this is a conversation too. So Crew right now does not have the space for us to put fifth grade in it. They are at capacity. Depending on what was decided to do, it would be great if we could have pre-K through five and Crew and then Blackstone. And then, as you said, that opens up the intermediate school to house the school board office. Because we also know the school board office doesn't fit in the school board office anymore. No, we're busting at the seams. But then it also puts us here at the complex with most of our schools and our students. That's an option. The alternative school that is now housed in the middle school could be housed there. Some of the people that we have to house out in other buildings, because we don't have room to put them, could be housed there. We would have to look at space and capacity for sixth grade to be at the middle school. But we need to look at the staff we have. Where do we move? Where do we adjust? So I think the best thing for us to do for y'all is for us to work up giving a proposal of possible things and what it would look like. And, you know, we feel comfortable that we could put fifth grade in Blackstone. We're talking three classes. But we can in Crew. So then that's another cost to incur as to putting a modular there. And then the fact that, okay, if you were to sell it, do you use the proceeds to put on in addition to Crew? Heather's going to give you a presentation here in a minute, though, that is going to show you about maintenance and grounds. And there's a lot of maintenance and grounds needs and issues that we have been experiencing. So really looking at all of those different dynamic factors so that you have some information as you move forward as to what maybe you would like to do with that.
So all that I said just previously, does it play into closing Burkeville Elementary January 15, 2026? And if we do, I would certainly think that the money, if we can sell the place, which I'm not at all convinced that we can, or at a good price, I just don't know. But let's just make sure we don't get the cart before the horse.
Well, I agree with that, not getting the cart before the horse, because all we're doing now is determining what it would be closed. All of the other things that you've discussed, there have been some previous discussions. We know that it would cost somewhere around $13 million to bring Burkeville up to standard, according to the Virginia Department of Education and all of the other folks that took a look at it. And I doubt that we get $13 from the Board of Supervisors. That's just my humble opinion.
That's a lot. You can say that again. That's a lot.
$13 million. But why don't we defer all of this discussion to our coming work session in August, where we can go through some of the ideas and discussions? Because January 15th of 2026 might cause a ripple effect once the Board of Supervisor learns it. Any other concerns or discussions?
Well, if it be the pleasure of the board prior to our work session, I will see if I can contact some real estate agents and see if I can get some feel for the marketability of Burkeville Elementary School. If you'd like me to do it, I will.
I don't personally have a problem as long as it's a.
Need a commercial.
You need a commercial.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Whatever that.
Would you like us to contact? That way, if they have specific questions regarding any of the building specifics, that we would have access to that. Heather and her team and Robbie can give any of those building specifics and we can put some stuff together and they can feel out some of those people.
I think that's an excellent idea. And I was just offering some help, because I.
No, I know. I just figured, I figured they would be asking you questions and then we would have to get the questions back and then do that. So Heather and her team can work on that. I'm committing her to it, but.
Should we wait until we find.
Get your own work, Heather.
The Board of Supervisors, if they're going to give us permission? So we're not taxing them with something that.
I think we can do some preliminary legwork, maybe, not go in depth with it. But do some preliminary legwork.
Have some informal checking.
I will tell you, and I think.
And we will have an idea.
Yeah, I shared it briefly at the work session, too. There was a conversation. And it may be that you, like Mr. Bowen, and he's willing to come to the work session to have the discussion. He did say, depending on what happened and once it was closed and those type of things with the building of the courthouse, that they may need to temporarily move. And he would be willing to rent or those type of things at facilities. But I would like him to speak to that with y'all as to what those thoughts are after January and that long range and things. So if you would like me to ask him to. The next work session, you're getting reports from all the schools, though. So I don't know if that's, if you're going to have enough time that evening, isn't that right, Charlotte? To do this topic, which is pretty heavy, and five school presentations, which might be pretty heavy, too. So would you like that in the September work session? And that way I can make sure Mr. Bowen has time. If you would like him to come to that one as well, and I'll reach out to him.
Thank you. I would mean.
It's fine with me, yeah.
I hear three okays.
We need to devote.
So be it.
Devote that time to that.
And just one last thing. And I keep going back to the old, I guess it was the old central of Lunenburg High School. And I've been driving by that place for over 25 years. And I've watched it go from a building that something, just from outward appearances, could be dealt with to something that you might find trouble getting a bulldozer in there to push it all down. And I absolutely don't want to see that happen tomorrow.
No, me either.
Question, if we surplus it back to them and we surplus it back to them, why would they run it from us?
We haven't surplus it to anybody.
We're not going to surplus. So we need to, that's, yeah.
We do anything we're going to sell.
In the real estate.
No, neither.
You don't want to be either.
No, no.
Any other questions or concerns or discussion? Hearing that, I'll take a vote to close Burkeville Elementary effective January 15, 2026. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Code of Student Conduct, Dr. Martin.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. In your packet this evening, you have the 2526 Code of Student Conduct. I did share with you changes at a glance. It highlights the minimal changes that we have, but pretty significant changes of importance for you to be aware of. Most of the other things are pretty much the same. Maybe some wording edits and things like that. edits and things like that. But the three areas that I asked that you look at, at the Changes of a Glance document is page 21, where it says chemical abuse. We did delete the wording of tobacco and our vaping products, because that's on page 31. So that was just to clear up some miswording that was in there and how they relate to other things. Page 26 and 27, you will see the code on cell phones that has been put in place. While not yet approved, we've already been communicating this with students and staff, that it is a bell-to-bell policy. It is the expectations that it will be enforced and that people will be held accountable. I attended the football meeting, parents' meeting last night, and they highlighted it with the football players, too, that they did not expect to see a single football player get caught with their cellphone, earbuds, any of those type of things, and what the consequences would be if they did not turn it over to a staff member when requested if they did have it out. And you can see our recommended consequences there for cellphone or media violations. Of course, the first offense is confiscation of the device by the administrator, parent notification. And we do give it back at the end of the day for the first offense. They'd have to come back and pick it up from the school office. The second offense, confiscation of the device by the administrator or designated, parent notification, and they need to come in and have a conference with the administrator, the parent, and the student together. And then we return it to the parent after that. Third plus offenses, confiscating the device, parent notification, student privileges for having a device within school grounds are removed, parent and student conference with the administrator, and then it's returned to the parent after that as well. There are different consequences for failing to turn over the device, because then that becomes a noncompliance issue with staff if you were caught with your cellphone and you've not done it. The policy also says that you, it either has to be in a backpack or it has to stay in your vehicle. It cannot be in your pockets. It cannot be where it's visible, and that's in line with what the law says regarding it. And then there's also the exception, because there will be exceptions if there is a medical situation, and you can find that wording there on page 30, I mean, sorry, 27. But it says, "Any student pursuant to an IEP, Section 504 Individualized Healthcare Plan or Limited English Proficiency Plan is permitted to possess and use a cellphone or smart device on school property, including in the classroom from bell to bell, or to monitor or address a health concern, or as an accommodation or assistive technology support. Parents of the students with a potential for an extenuating circumstance should contact the principal and student case manager to complete all necessary paperwork to request an exception to this rule. In addition to the paperwork, a conference or meeting will be held to understand the compliance with the extenuating circumstances listed above, and then it will be reviewed to determine approval based on that." So it's still not just a one-and-done type of policy. So you have that. And then the final thing that you have that was a change for us is on page 31, and it's the tobacco products and nicotine vapor. I will say that our instances of vapes went down this past year, for whatever the reason may be. Maybe the newness is where it worn off, or maybe they just found a different way to hide them, whatever it may be. And I know there's some different laws. I know we met with our SROs. There's some different things that are going to affect about vapes and all of these different things from that side. But first offense, they're going to be confiscated, parent notification. We are putting in a required completion of a one-hour vaping awareness and prevention education course to teach students what it is about vaping, and that's a $25 program fee payable to the school and two days of ISS on the first offense with it. And just know that the school would pay the fee upfront for the course. It's a prescribed course through DCJS, I believe. Somebody, Shandra, can correct me. They would pay the fee, but that is a fee that if it's not paid, it attaches to that student until they graduate. And so if they do not pay that fee prior to graduation, they will not walk for graduation. That is one of those fees that we will keep track of and carry on. Hopefully, after you pay the fee the first time, and you've had this meeting and everything, you won't want to get caught with them again. Second offense, it would be confiscated. It's a parent and student conference with the school administrator, three days of ISS. They would do a completion of a vaping dangers and education course with the school resource officer and the parent. So we are really looking at the expectations and the accountability of our parents being involved in these processes to help support us in what we're doing. And so they would need to come in with their parent and meet with the SRO and the administrator and go through this course again at a different level with them. And they would lose all school-based activities for 30 days. That means you cannot participate in any outside activities for 30 days if you've caught the second time with the vape, attending games, participating in sports, any of those type of things. Third plus offense, it would be confiscated, parent notification, five days of OSS, parent and student conference with school-based personnel, including the school administrator, and that would be loss of all school-based activities for the remainder of the school year. So that means you couldn't attend prom.
Any way.
I mean, any of those type of things. So really getting kids to understand that, one, it's serious, and the health risks are dangerous to them, and we don't know the long-term health risk associated with some of those things. But again, holding our students accountable, setting high expectations for them, enforcing those expectations. This came out of our administrative retreat when we reviewed it. So all of our principals and our administrators and our support staff that were in there in those roles collectively came up with these together as to what we felt was best and what we needed to be seen. So I feel very confident in what we've presented to you this evening. And then, of course, as always, refusal to comply, that's a different set of consequences that can be used. And depending on the nature and severity, always different consequences can go and more severe consequences, yes. And that also, so that's the vape part, but if it's a, and I'm not going to tell you this part, right, because I don't know all of the vapes and dab pens and everything else there are out there, but if it has a drug in it, that's a whole different set of offenses that it goes. This is strictly talking about the nicotine vaping pens, but when it crosses into that line of something with drugs, and it, there's all different sorts of offenses and consequences for those type of things.
I was talking with one of the SROs just in the last couple of days, and he showed me something. He confiscated a vaping thing that looked like a magic marker, and it had THC in it, which is marijuana.
As highlighters, I mean, we've done hidden in plain sight several times, and it's very eye-opening. As a parent, I did not go home and tear my whole son's room apart after that, because I was like, oh, that's, you know, but I think Dr. Greeley was there, and we all were looking going, oh, my, like, should we go check every lamp and book and everything in the house just to make sure? But it is, it's very interesting and eye-opening as to what companies are marketing things to students, and we don't know what effects these things will have on students. But we do feel that we have put forth in the student code of conduct some strong policies for your consideration this evening. So I would ask that y'all approve them.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the 2025-26 Code of Student Conduct as amended and mentioned by Dr. Martin?
No move.
Second. Any discussion?
I have a question regarding the, which I love it, but I have a question regarding the requirement of them to pay or the legal grounds for that.
Yes. We, I mean, they have to pay other incentive fees. If we're in a situation where somebody, we will take that all into consideration. But if they lose a textbook, they're required to have a textbook before they are able to graduate, so we can carry the fees over. But I can verify that to make certain that there's nothing...
I wasn't, I was unable to find anything that was for it or against it. That's something that before we apply a $25 fee to make them pay for it based on a discipline.
Right.
And I would just want to make sure that we're in good standing with that.
Yeah. I can do a check and verify that for you, though.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same side.
No.
Approval of the travel for Superintendent, Dr. Martin?
So in your packet this evening, and I believe Ms. Wood has given you just an updated list, our upcoming meetings that have related directly to this. The SOS statewide meeting, that's the Start on Success Grant. That is the initial meeting for our grant that we received for students with disabilities for work-based learning transition programs. That is in September, September the 16th in Richmond. The VSBA Legislative Advocacy Conference, that is in Chesterfield. Most likely, I'll be attending the virtual option that is here, so I don't need to actually attend it in person, but it's there in case I do need to. The Region Eight Superintendents Meeting is in Farmville in October. You've already approved the September one. The VAS Fall Conference in Richmond, October 26 through the 28th. I will only be attending, I think it's on the 27th, but the date range is there for you. The VSBA Annual Convention in Williamsburg, which you each have on your calendars as well, November 18 through the 21st. And then I did add this one. I was asked to serve on the panel for the aspiring superintendents program on January 15th to discuss pathways to superintendency and how to prepare yourself for that. And I would be excited and honored to serve on that. And I'm also excited and honored that I would be able to serve on that panel, because Dr. Lewis is going through that program for us as a possible aspiring superintendent. So I would be able to serve on a panel of a session that she would be attending, too, so.
I have a motion to approve the conferences and meetings as outlined in the program.
No move.
Second. Any discussion? Yes, yes. Dr. Lewis, that doesn't mean that you can leave.
That's exactly what I said when we talked about her being in it. She's not going anywhere.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There are no non-action items. Information items, summer internship program. Dr. Martin?
So this is one of always exciting programs that we have, and I'm actually going to turn it over to Dr. Foster to present about the summer internship program. So this was his last official summer in charge of the program. He is handing it off to Lisa Hudson, who's the new school community coordinator. But this has been a very successful program that we started right after COVID. I think that first year, we were able to start it with funds from some of our ESR funds to give students work-based learning opportunities. It has grown every year. We've had more student interest. We have built the program. We, when ESR funds ran out, we were very fortunate that the board felt that it was a program that we needed to continue, and we appreciate that support that we've had to help continue to promote this program for our students and give them the opportunities. So with that, I cannot speak highly enough about the job that Dr. Foster has done over the years overseeing this and adding to it and giving students the experiences and the training opportunities and how to write resumes and interview and different things. And so I'm going to turn it over to him to highlight the program.
Appreciate the words. Mr. Abbott, members of the board, Dr. Martin, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Very, very kind. That doesn't work. That's great. It works now. So again, the goal of our program is to provide a high-quality work-based learning experience for our rising seniors and our graduating seniors. We've had success over the last three years of finding jobs for our graduating seniors and some part-time positions for our rising seniors. Again, to be eligible, it's our students that are age 16 and above, valid driver's license. We did have a student this year that didn't have a driver's license, but their placement really helped them out to ensure that they were able to finish the experience. Of course, be a rising senior, remember the most recent graduating class. The application process, this year we have 46 applications. Each student receives an interview. There are a variety of factors that go into the placement, including the panel interview and the committee coming together to make a recommendation for their placement. But they also must ask a teacher for one letter of recommendation at least. We ask, they ask them in person, and they ask them well in advance before the due date. Students are placed really based off their career interests and the needs of our partner businesses, and we'll get more into them, but their strengths as well. For our students that have different interests, we want to make sure that they truly get the most out of this experience, and it truly leads them down a path for their career. Again, it's no call to our partner business. We're so grateful for your support to be able to fund some compensation for our students for 175 hours of this work-based learning. They receive it in two installments, at 85 hours and at 175 hours. We have one student that'll be able to pick up their last check this upcoming Monday. Constantly evaluated, we evaluate our students in the classroom. We're also going to evaluate them through this experience, check in with them weekly, perform site visits, talk with their supervisors, talk with them, any customers we get to see in the community sometimes. And we talk about their timeliness, making sure they're on time to work, are ready to be there, that they're professional, and then, of course, they're performing the duties that have been assigned to them and that they're interested in. This year, we had 20 students. Like I said, we interviewed each of the applicants, and we were able to narrow that field down to 20 across 14 of our local businesses and organizations. We had 10 students that are going to be seniors this year, and then 10 of our students that were graduating. Now, I'd like to invite one of our interns, Ms. Ava Martin, up to make a few remarks.
Good afternoon. This summer, through the internship program here at NHS, I was given the opportunity to work at the nonprofit organization for the Town of Blackstone Juneteenth Committee. I learned so much about how a nonprofit is run and what it means to run your own business. I got to work alongside some very hard-working individuals that have definitely inspired me to do something like this again. The work I did was demanding but incredibly rewarding once everything came together. A nonprofit is not an easy thing to run, but I do believe they are so important for the community, and especially one like this, in which we're able to learn and teach about things we may otherwise not have known. All in all, I very much enjoyed my experience. I feel as if I gained some very valuable lessons from my time in the committee. I've learned skills of organization, emotional control, and task initiation that I'll care with me, that I'll carry with me. I have learned just how much effort goes into a huge celebration like this. While our committee didn't have a lot of time to prepare, we were still able to put on a very successful event. I also learned how draining yet fulfilling a long day of work can be just from the day. From walking up and down the streets, making sure everything goes according to plan, to just enjoying ourselves and having fun, it was a day I will never forget. That being said, I believe the internship program is very positive for non-away students to experience. It taught me and many others what it means to have a job and how to be a good employee. I'm very grateful for this opportunity given to me and all the lessons I will take away from it. I truly enjoyed my time as an intern and plan to stay on the committee to help with the Juneteenth event and other events like it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. So now you want to hear about some data and what we've done to recognize our students, right? So Tuesday, July 29th, we were able to recognize our students. Mr. Abbott, thank you for attending the event. It was a beautiful, beautiful night. Each of our students received a certificate of completion and recognition, in addition to our business partners, who've been such an integral part of this program, the Juneteenth Committee, I think it's Clarksville Auto Supply now. They've been there since the start, among some others as well, but it was a great opportunity to have everybody together, families as well, to recognize and celebrate our students. For our rising, or I guess in total, we had three students out of the program that were offered part-time employment. We had one student that was offered full-time employment. One, Ms. Martin, that's continuing as a volunteer with the Juneteenth Committee, and one of our students, Ms. Lauren Lee, that was placed with In-Depth Productions. She has opened her own business, captured by Lauren. She is, she's taken clients now, so we're very pleased with that. For our seniors, we have five of them that will be attending college or trade school full-time, three plan to work part-time and attend community college, and one student plans to enlist in the Navy, with the final student planning to enlist in the Army very soon. Again, I thank you for your time and for your support. Without, without your support, this would not be possible. I'm excited to see how this program will grow and the success of our students in the future.
Thank you. And I will digress for just a moment. If we notice, Mr. Colburn...
Who was that strange individual that the next day and later?
Did not put himself in his own newspaper.
Very humble over here.
Very modest. But as an employer in the community, it's great to have the support for a student in our division. And I will digress even further. I'm going to guess that's your mom. Thank you.
Thank you. We're very grateful.
For doing what sometimes seems to be a challenge, and that's called parenting. It's obvious that she has a good role model to look up to.
Yes, indeed. You going to say, Bill?
I was going to say, our intern was punctual, professional, courteous, had the pleasure of writing her several letters of recommendation for a scholarship, and we're already kind of brainstorming next year, if we're able to participate, how to make the experience even better for the intern. She was, she did everything I asked of her. Just Chikala Watson, bright future.
Thank you.
Very impressed.
Thank you again. The, I got this, right? Summer school updates, Dr. Lewis?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the school board, and Dr. Martin. Thank you for the opportunity to share... for the opportunity to share information on summer school. Ms. Clary was our actual summer school liaison and lead admin for the summer, but she's on vacation, so I'm her stand-in, and I will have the pleasure of leading summer school next year. So, tonight, I want to share just a little bit about the program, participation, instructional focus, academic and testing outcomes. They did do some STEM activities, so they have some photos. But the primary purpose of our summer school program is to provide target academic support, enrichment opportunities for students' grades first through 12. The program did go through July the 7th through July the 18th, it was Monday through Thursday for those two weeks. We did have a large participation. We had 250 students participate in our summer program. We had 76 from Blackstone Primary, 43 from Crew Primary, we had 54 from Notaway Intermediate School, 32 from the middle school, and 40 from the high school. We did have some students take their SOLs during the summer, so we did have, have that data here, hold on one second. We had 11 to pass their Algebra I test, and we had two to pass their biology test. So, that was a success. Sometimes they come and they're not, they just don't make it, but this was very intense. We had teachers that were certified, that provided the remediation. The students were very attentive. They came, they participated, and we did have a great success, which changed some of their schedules for the upcoming year, because now they can move on to another course and another SOL that they need to graduate. So, the program did follow the SOLs. Our primary schools and intermediate school, middle school, did, of course, encourage the phonics fluency, comprehension strategies, and the foundations of math skills, and the high school focused on the recovery. Teachers did do a survey, and that's in the presentation. I couldn't really see all the numbers, so I'm going to let that play, so that you all can see the numbers. We're going to stop it so that you can at least view it. But in closing, our summer school program continues to play a vital role in supporting our students academically and socially, and I would like to thank our teachers and staff and families for their dedication and commitment to student success and allowing the students to participate. Teachers did participate. We had 27 teachers here this summer that participated. I did not mention, but we did have our early extended school year here. So, we had some students with disabilities here that participated. They were here, they received lunch, they interacted with their peers here as well. So, I would also like to share the video that Ms. Clary did, of course, put together. So, it's a great presentation, so we're going to play that for you right quick. Some of our students presenting their STEM activities and different activities that they did to show how they were excelling academically. That's the teacher, the schoolteacher evaluation. So, Ms. Clary was very diligent about how it was working, what we need to work on for next year. So, this data will be shared with me, and I will use it next year to improve our program for the 2026 school year. That's why I didn't write it down. I wanted to go with the larger side of it, as the positive side of Mrs. Duncan, but she didn't put it, so I didn't want to give misinformation. I respect that. I respect that. But I wanted the higher end to be the positive end, but that's what I would have said. I didn't want to give misinformation. But we will use that data. I will get with her to get with those numbers represent, and then use that data to improve our program for next year. Any questions?
Thank you. Maintenance and grounds report. Meyer.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Dr. Martin. So, this evening, I'm going to present to you some information about our maintenance and grounds. I do have some pictures in here. We'll talk about some of the interesting things that we have had to deal with lately, to give you a picture of just where we are with our facilities and the needs that we do have. So, I'll kind of go over a couple of things. There's a couple of new laws out that are going to affect us. House Bill 2278, which was passed in the spring, is an ADA compliance review that we actually have to do and have submitted to the state by November 1. That is one of the current request for proposals I have out right now, which, those are on our website, as well as there in Eva, which is the state's procurement platform. The other new law is House Bill 2618, which will require indoor air quality testing every so often. So, right now, we are in discussions with other schools within Region 8, as well as a few vendors. It's just how to best go about this, what this is going to entail, what the process is going to be, so that we can really get some information. There's no deadline as to when this has to be started. So, right now, we're kind of in that fact gathering stage of how this is going to actually be processed and how we're going to start managing it, you know, going forward. So, we have currently right now, two requests for proposals out. Both of these are listed on our website, but they're also in the Eva platform, which is the state procurement platform. One is for a company to come in and do an ADA compliance review for us of all of our grounds and facilities, athletic, school, everything. The other one we have out there is an RFP for elevator maintenance, service, and inspections. The current elevator company that we have is non-existent, basically. They don't respond. They don't help. We have two elevators right now that are down. They came out, they looked, they said they ordered the parts. A month later, we found out they didn't order the parts. They gave us a ridiculous quote. We asked questions, and they've not responded. So, now, our maintenance team is actually going to repair the elevator, which all it is is the little key, where you turn it to call it. So, it's not any of the major elevator mechanisms, but we do need an elevator company that can come do preventative maintenance every year, that can do service calls within a reasonable amount of time, and can do our yearly inspections. Now, I will say, this came out of the fire marshal's, you know, response. A lot of them are just, they're no good. So, I'm hoping by us putting this out, and it went to 69 different elevator companies. I've already been contacted by two, so I am hopeful that maybe we will be able to find a good elevator company that will work with us.
Elevators require a periodic inspection and
They require yearly inspection.
And a certificate of suitability?
Yes, and the state fire marshal will tell you that a good chunk of companies and businesses that have elevators technically are out of compliance, but because of the known issue with elevator companies not responding, they haven't, it hasn't been hit on a lot of the fire inspections that they've done, because it's a known issue. So, we're hoping that we can get a really good company. I've had one from Virginia contact me. I've had one from Texas contact me. So, at this point, as long as they can service us, and they can service us appropriately and in a timely manner, and don't cost us an arm and a leg, I don't care what state they're from, as long as we can get what we need from them. So, I am hopeful that we will be able to, you know, get something good and positive moving forward, because our elevators are needed. That's another ADA thing that we need to make sure we have up and operational. So, just wanted to give you, you know, a heads up about what we have out there right now. Just kind of going back and doing a little bit of just year-end review from last year about some of the projects that we did. Some of these were projects related to our Department Energy Grant. Other ones were just repairs that we have done, or upgrades that we did with the state construction money that they gave us a few years ago. So, we did new doors at Crew and Intermediate School, new boilers here at the high school, a new boiler at Crew, new LED lighting across all schools, bathroom upgrades at Blackstone and Crew, roof repairs at Blackstone to take care of their leaks that they had. I'm sure I have missed some, but those were some of the big ones. And I wanted just to provide you some pictures of some of the things we've done. The top two, the green is the before, those were wooden doors that were starting to rot at the bottom. The new are the steel doors that we put in. This actually leads out to the weight room in the playground at the Intermediate School, so a drastic difference. Now, the doors are no longer that tan color. They have now been painted, but that's just a before and after picture of that. The bottom two are of our, some of our exterior lighting, which we really did lack in. It wasn't that bright. I will say, the one is the student parking lot right outside at night, especially for football games or any other sporting events at the stadium there. Having that lighting really makes it a lot more secure. And then, the other one is just the front of Crew Primary. There again, it is just nice and lit up, makes it much more secure in the event that we have a nighttime program there, or heaven forbid, you have to come out in the middle of the night and, you know, answer a fire alarm call or something else. So, it does just help with security. Some of the projects that we've already done this school year, and one of the things we've been working on through the last several years is removing all the carpet out of our schools, because carpet just gets, in a school gets nasty, and it's harder to clean. So, this summer, we did the library at the middle school, and that looks fantastic. Hopefully, next summer, we'll have the funding to be able to do the high school library. And then after that, there's just a few little odds and ends classrooms that still have some carpet that we want to pull out. We did painting at the complex. This is something I've been wanting to do for a long time. We tried to hire a painter. That really wasn't successful. But we did find a company on the state contract that was reasonably priced. They came in this summer, and I mean, they worked very diligently, and they painted the main auditorium, and I'll have a picture of that to show you. And that room really needed a lot of assistance. You saw that the tape from the drywall joints was starting to fall off. It just, it needed, it needed a refresh. But they also painted all the halls and stairwells, trying to give the school at least a little bit of a refresh with what we can. We know there's still a lot more painting to do with classrooms, bathrooms, all of that, but it's a start. We did the halls at Crew Primary last school, last summer, so we did the complex this summer. Next summer, hopefully, we'll have the funds to be able to do the halls at Blackstone Primary, just so we can kind of keep the momentum going and doing some of these small painting projects every, well, not small, but some of these painting projects every summer. Some of the repairs that we have done, we have replaced an astronomical amount of ceiling tiles, and I will go into a little more detail about that. We have replaced some pipe insulation on chilled water lines at the middle school, the Intermediate School, and Blackstone Primary. On these chilled water lines, because they condensate, there's a special insulation wrap that has to be on them, so that the condensation does not leak through the insulation onto your ceiling tile or ceiling. That insulation that was on those was old. It had become fragile. It had been torn. So, we were having little drips every time, you know, we'd have a temperature change, and we'd have some condensation. So, this summer, we were able to finally find a company who would come out and repair that. And I know they're not finished. They're still working, so hopefully, they will be finished in the next couple of weeks, so that we can get those areas looking all nice, neat, and back to normal. We have done a lot of repair on HVAC pipes at Crew Primary, and I'll go into a little more detail about that, too. We've also repaired walls at Crew Primary. So, we have really come to realize in the last, I don't know, a month, month and a half, just the in-depth issues that we have in that school building. So, Mr. Templeton brought it to Dr. Martin and my attention when we did a walk with him through all the schools, that it was discovered this summer in two of our classrooms where the wall had shifted, exterior wall. And it was, it had let some of the insulation that was in the center block wall out into the classroom. You go outside, and you looked outside, you could actually see the wall bowing. You could even see one of the drainage, the gutter pipes had actually bowed out. So, we got with a Class A contractor and a structural engineer, had them come out and look at it. Thankfully, the actual foundation is still structurally sound. The building is structurally safe. So, I do want to reiterate, it is structurally safe, and they recommended something that we could do to fix it. And a lot of it really is, one, several years ago, prior to me ever being here, there were trees out front. They cut those down, but they left the stumps. Well, when you leave a stump, the roots can still keep growing. And so, they had started growing into, and pushing the foundation. The other thing is the drainage at Crew Primary, because it's built below the road, is not the greatest. That's one of the reasons why their geothermal wells failed, is because of the drainage on that property. So, the structural engineer gave us some really good ideas on how to address the drainage issue on the front, and I'll have a picture when we get to the grounds part to show you what that looks like. So, that has been addressed, and it is something that we will continue to monitor on a quarterly basis, just to make sure there's no additional shifting. If there does show additional shifting, then the next phase will have to be to put in helical piles, and I don't even want to know what the cost of that would be. So, we're really hoping that just addressing the drainage, taking out the tree roots that were there, will stop or slow the process, but it is something that we're going to have to inspect on a quarterly basis. Now, the HVAC system at Crew, it is 30 years old. And with Crew Primary, you have two roofs. You have your original flat roof, which is where all of your water source heat pump units are at, and then they put the pitched roof over it. So, it makes it extremely hot to get up there and work. It's miserable for our HVAC technicians. It's miserable for our maintenance people. But those units are at end of life. And one of the things we found out this year is, you know, we put in, because the geothermal wells have failed, we had to have an alternate source for our heating. So, we added a boiler, which was done with that Department of Energy Grant. Well, boilers put, you know, some pressure on your pipes. Well, pressure that it wasn't used to seeing on 30-year-old pipes, it did cause some pipes to rupture. More than once, we've had a flood in that building. We've had two in the span of three weeks. I did not put the video of the last one in here, where it was literally raining inside the building. Some of the other issues that we've noticed, and trainers starting to look at this, there are brass fittings connected to PVC fittings, and maybe the PVC fittings are not really rated for the PSI, for the temperature that that attic space gets. It's rated for the pressure we need, but it may just not be rated enough for the temperature that that attic space gets. Replacing fittings is a lot cheaper than redoing all the plumbing, but we are going to have to look at doing something to that HVAC system. We're going to have to look at doing something, replacing those units. One of the things that Mr. Templeton and I really would like to look at is, instead of doing all these water source heat pumps, where there's one for every classroom, is doing a big HVAC unit, kind of like we have on the halls here at the high school, where it would sit outside. It wouldn't be in the attic space. It would be easier to maintenance, maintain, but it would be a lot of replumbing. It would be a lot of new ductwork, but it would resolve a lot of issues that we're currently having. Not to mention, you know, just today, we had an electrical failure there. Transformer blew three hours prior to, you know, the start of open house. Luckily, we were able to get Dominion Power out. They were able to fix it. They were able to get it up. But it has been known for several years that the electrical service in that building is not adequate. It's to the point now, between, you know, they've got smart panels, Chromebooks, and anything else in that room, they have to strategically know. They can't plug it in all in one area, because they will blow a breaker in a heartbeat. And to have to put that burden on our teachers to make sure that they don't plug two things on this wall and, you know, one thing on this wall, it's a lot to ask of them to have to worry about. So, we know the electrical service in that building is just not, it's not good. Not to mention, when you talk about just the grounds themselves, this summer, we had to do an emergency, and I called an emergency repair on the playground, because it was not safe. I kid you not, there was one hole that came up all the way to my knee, and there's the playground spike that holds the trim in. the playground spike that holds the trim in, that was way up, it wasn't safe for our kids to play on. Um, so we had a contractor come out, regrade, um, fix that. So there is just a massive amount of drainage issues, HVAC issues, electrical issues, we have the, the foundation issues. This is going to be a school that we are going to have to do some serious looking at, um, to determine really what the future of it's going to be, what we need to do with it. It might even be, as much as I hate to say this, a school that we look at literally replacing at some point because of the issues, so that it can be honestly built up to the level of the road, regraded, um, and, and just revisited, just because the issues just keep piling up there. I mean, we have issues at our other schools, but that one has taken the cake this summer. I mean, Dr. Martin, Dr. Gravely, myself, several of my custodians, maintenance, I mean, we spent a Sunday there, hours and hours sucking up water, mopping up water, um, and I'm very thankful that our crew secretary found it as quickly as she did, and, uh, Mr. Page was able to call me, and we were able to react as quickly as we were. But it, it was, it was a massive undertaking. Um, and Train got someone right out there on site to help us get the, the plumbing fixed and the attic space from the HVAC, um, pipes that, that literally sheared off and ruptured. Um, so we were very thankful for that, and they were able to get the units back up and running so the air, the school had air. Um, but it has been a very stressful summer. Um, I know for, for, for me, I know for the admin at Crew Primary, the teachers there, it, it has been a very stressful, I would say really since probably January, that we've had a lot of the, the HVAC issues. Um, so this is a school that we are going to have to do some serious, um, conversations about as we go into budget season, capital improvement planning, um, and just having those conversations as about what we're going to do with Crew Primary. Um, so some of the positives that I would like to show you.
Always in the mood.
So, this is a picture of one of the bathrooms we redid, um, new fixtures, new partitions. We went with an epoxy coating on the walls and floor that can be pressure washed very easily. It actually wipes off very easily, it cleans very easily, um, and that's what we want for our custodians, is something that's just easy to manage. Um, some of these old bathrooms with old tile, it just takes a lot of scrubbing, um, because, you know, shiny finish is not on there anymore, so it takes a lot more elbow grease to do. And I mean, I hate to say it, my custodian staff is, is an aging population, so to be able to provide something, one that looks nice for our students and our staff, but also something that's easy for them to maintain is very important. So that's one of the pictures I wanted to show you. The other one is, um, of our, um, main auditorium, you can see the plastic all over the chairs. Um, they did a beautiful job in that, so it's something we can really be proud of, again, to have, um, host things in, for our high school to host things in, um, so wanted to make sure that that looked really good. And Mr. Simp, Templeton went back and looked in his records, he couldn't even find the last time it was actually painted, um, so it was nice to have a little refresh in there.
Well, aren't we?
So, yeah. Um, so, so talking about the issues and concerns, the HVAC system, the electrical, we also have roofs that are going to need to be replaced. Now, we did do repairs at Blackstone, and it has stopped all but one leak. Um, and that one leak is, is an issue with the flashing and the gutter, um, so that's going to have to be really taken care of whenever we go to replace that flat roof section. Um, so we know that that's one that has to be replaced. Um, Intermediate School has pockets in their roof that is starting to fail. Um, one we just found this week and we're able to get at least plugged for now, um, but plugs only last for so long, and then you have to plug other things, and then, so eventually, we're going to need, um, roof replacements. The middle school also has, um, some roof leaks that are starting to pop up here and there, but there again, those roofs are getting towards end of life, so it's expected to start popping up. Um, but what we don't want to do is to have torrential downpours inside the building, so we try to, you know, try to catch them when we can, but that is not always the case.
Oh, right.
Um, so those are just some, some upcoming issues and concerns that we definitely have. I will say, um, one of the things that we found out about last week, Dr. Martin, myself, and Mr. Templeton met with three members of the Virginia Department of Education this week. Um, we were, I won't say awarded, um, the Virginia Department of Education was awarded a federal grant, um, I do not know what SASI stands for, but it's S-A-S-I, um, where they were able to come in and work with school divisions to teach them how to do facility condition assessments, and they will create a dashboard. We were one of 15 chosen, and part of that's because of our local, our, um, local composite index, um, our poverty level, our free and reduced lunch numbers, as well as we had to do a survey in, in the spring, um, and based on those answers, we were one of 15 chosen. Um, so we met with them to try to understand what the program does, you know, this, that, and the other. Um, so what they will do is they will contract with a company to come out here and do a facility condition assessment of one of our schools. They typically targeted the high school, but they did let us know that if there's one that would make more sense other than the high school, we can change that. Um, but in that process, they'll have the company do the facility condition assessment of one school, but then they will train us on how to do it for the rest of the schools. They will also provide us with a dashboard where all this data goes, um, that will help us also with, you know, determining replacement costs, um, timelines for replacement. So I think it'll go a long way in helping us really assess our, our schools, um, provide us with some data that we can provide to you all, so that you know kind of what we're looking at in the future, data we can provide to the board supervisors so they understand truly where we are at, um, with our schools and our, 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 um, conditions. So I'm excited about that program and actually being able to be taught how to do something, um, I think will be a very meaningful, a meaningful process, and that is, um, something that, you know, we will continue to be forward with them. They're paying for it all, so it's no cost out of us. There's literally truly a learning opportunity for us to be able to, to learn how to do something. Um, so that is one thing. Um, so going into kind of our grounds, you know, one of the things that Dr. Martin and I talked about is really trying to do some landscaping, making our schools look much more inviteable, um, and keeping this a yearly thing. You know, we started out small this year, we want to keep every year kind of expanding, you know, what the landscaping looks like at our schools. Um, so that's one of the projects we did this summer, um, and, and we did, we started out small, and then hopefully we will branch out. And then obviously, one of the repairs I talked about was the drainage at Crew Primary. Um, so here's a couple of things. So Crew Primary, which is the first picture, prior to this, that was all grass, grass and tree stumps. Um, the tree stumps were taken out, um, all the grass and about two inches of dirt were taken out. They went in, regraded, packed it down, and we put rock, and it's sloped so that the water drains away from the building, um, and into the, the, well, it's really into the bus loop, um, just to keep the water off of the building foundation. Um, so this will be something that, you know, we'll continue to monitor, and I mean, we'll have to refill rock here and there, because we know that'll wash away a little bit, too, but we did put border to try to keep it in. Um, but it does look really nice, because one of the other things that I really want to do is I want to remove the grass that is next to all of our buildings, so that we're not mowing up next to the building, we're not weed eating up next to the building. Um, so hopefully, we can come in here and we can, you know, we can plant some flowers, you know, the kids at Crew Primary could, you know, add some little painted rocks out there and do a really cute rock garden. So I mean, there's some things that they can do to really, you know, spruce it up and make it look a little extra special, but that is one of the, um, projects that we did this summer. Um, over the second picture, that is a circle out, um, between our middle and intermediate school, where we actually, um, did some landscaping, shaped up the bushes, added some mulch, um, really trying to make it just look nicer than what it was, um, and we will continue to do this. We did some mulching at, um, Blackstone Primary School. We have one more mulching project to do right before school starts, which is right out here in front of our high school, which is around those two rocks that they have, and around their, their sign out front. And then Department of Education, they have a list of recommended shrubs and plant, and flowers that you can plant that don't grow very big, so they're not a security risk for anybody hiding behind them, and we're really hoping that Mr. Rash's class can kind of help us with doing some plantings around the school, um, all the schools and, and that aspect. So the landscaping is something that we will continuously try to build on every year, um, just so we can look, make our buildings look really nice and inviting, um, from the road, for the students, you know, I mean, every little bit of, of, you know, ray of sunshine we can give to them is, is important, so they make sure that they, they want to come to school and they, or have pride in the school that they attend. Um, so that is my update for this evening on that. If you have any questions, I will be glad to answer.
Since I've been on the school board, I have heard an awful lot about all of the grants that we receive and, uh, I mean, kudos to everybody that's had a hand in all of that. My question is, how do we stand with all the other school divisions in the state as far as being so proactive in getting grants? I mean, like, I'm, I just have to think we're up toward the top, but...
I mean, we do a good job of going after grants, but a lot of our grants don't fund, you know, building projects. We went after the Department of Energy grant, which did, but I don't know, you know, how much the federal government's going to sustain any of that going forward. The state has construction grants, but the problem with those, they give us 30%, we have to find the other 70, and that's a huge chunk of money to have to find. Um, and other school divisions, even ones that, that are as rural and as, you know, have the low LCI, I mean, even some of those get the, you know, capital improvement money from their, their counties. We don't. Um, so we really rely on...
That's really where I'm going with all of this, is that we do not get the support from local government that a lot of counties and other school divisions get.
Correct.
Look what we're doing in spite of that.
We really rely on the money that we may have left over from salary savings or any other savings throughout the year to really try to do some of these projects. Um, and we don't have a maintenance reserve fund. Um, you know, that's, most school divisions don't, um, unless you're like Loudoun County, Fairfax County, a large school division, but that is something that most major universities and colleges have, they have a maintenance reserve fund. State requires it. The state does recommend, Virginia Department of Education does, that we reserve 1% to 2% of our budget for capital improvement, but when we're already at a situation where we can, we already had to cut things last year, our salary scales are not where they need to be for teachers, it's hard to reserve that, knowing that you have so many other things that you need to do and accomplish. And I'm very, you know, thankful that Dr. Martin has been able to find already some savings this year, um, and I'm hoping going into budget season, we can really hunker down and look at some things and have some, you know, some ideas outside of the box that we can, we can think about. Um, but it is, it is tough to budget for this, and heaven forbid, you know, we do have something that goes down and cannot be repaired, really trying to find, you know, those funds. Um, you know, we have these forest reserve funds that we have, we have used for major emergency repairs. Those have dwindled, we still have some left, and I'm trying to hold on to those, um, because I know that without a maintenance reserve, that's all the emergency funds that I have to use. Um, so it's, it's difficult, this is, to be able to budget this stuff.
Are we doing any kind of job in making sure the public knows all of this?
Well, that was one reason why Dr. Martin wanted me to present tonight.
Yeah, that, to get that out there. Hearing what we're doing, and as you said, with the little funds that we have, um, and the dedic, and I'm going to speak to it in my superintendent's report, but the dedicated staff that we have that, I mean, comes in on a Sunday afternoon and, I mean, everybody's working to get water out of a building. And so we're very fortunate that we have dedicated staff members across the division that keep our buildings up and running and are focused on these things. But, I mean, at some point, things are exposed, they're aging buildings, and the community needs to be aware of, yes, our, we do a lot of work to keep what we have in, in good shape and good condition, but that doesn't sustain us forever. I mean, just like with this recent water damage at Crew, and the conversation I had with the company was, okay, well, and we actually have a meeting with them next week, Train and their executives, uh, one of them are coming down, they're doing a walk with us, Heather and myself, and having a conversation, I said, okay, the problem is fixed, but my concern is long-term damage to the building, the infrastructure inside, water seeping in things, the mold possibly, the mild, like, all of these things that we don't see, we're being able to...
Water can do a lot of damage.
Water can do the damage, the health of our kids and our staff, um, the damage to the teachers' things that are in there that we're having to replace continuously with that. And our teachers are dedicated, and they, they spend a lot of time, and to have to keep going back and doing, I heard their frustrations, I, fun, I heard Mr. Page's frustrations, um, I know he's frustrated with it over and over again. I'm frustrated with it over and over again, so, um, yes, it needs, that's, that's one of the things behind this. For people to see, we're doing a lot with the very little, and it's because of the dedicated staff we have here in the school division that is doing those type of things, because we do take pride. I go back to, we're committed to what we're doing. Not everybody's always like that, though, and, you know, we have to take, we have to show what we have, but we also need to share what are the needs. And so my goal moving forward, like Heather's focus tonight, you know, we've heard from SED, we heard from athletics, you know, HR, where are, like, all, reports from every, student services. I know Dr. Lewis and I have talked about every other month, discipline updates, so people know what we're doing, want to get the good out that we're doing as well, the positivity, but we do, people need to understand what we are, what we're working with and what we're working behind the scenes on to ensure our kids are safe and our staff are safe.
And I will say, Train is installing a second boiler at Crew at their cost, not at ours, because they realize that, I mean, through no fault of their own, because of our old system there, that that one is just, it puts too much on the system and it really needs to be split to two. So they are actually, this fall, going to be installing a second boiler at their cost, not at ours, um, which is a huge thank you and blessing to them.
It helps that Myra Quicks from here.
It, it does, we have a really good advocate, but, you know, we've also, you know, those, those relationships with, with the community, with the vendors is very important. Um, and I mean, she was there with us Sunday, in the trenches, cleaning, pushing water, um, so, you know, having, having, you know, that, that, that community behind us, it's locally, um, and then, you know, having a major corporation that's to support us like that is very, is very important, and they want to do right by us, and they want to, you know, make sure that we're up and running, um, is very, is very important to us.
I have a question regarding Crew Primary and the wall that you said that was bowing. You mentioned something about, um, you could see insulation or insulation came through. I guess...
That, that was all fixed on the interior. Um, the contractor that we contacted came in, um, chiseled out a bunch of the mortar joints, refilled them, resealed them, um, patched, painted, so all, everything that was done and, that, that needed to be done inside to seal those areas has been, um, so that was, that was the first thing we did even before addressing the outside, was making sure that that was done, just in the event that the outside couldn't be addressed until after school started, but we were able to get it done before. We really wanted to make sure the inside was taken care of so that the teachers should come in and set up their rooms.
Thank you.
Just going to stand right here.
You're next.
I know. Um, I do not have anything to report to you this evening on the feasibility study. Um, I don't really have an update on that, and, you know, based upon what you all voted on this evening and what we're going to work on as far as, you know, some options, we can go further in depth on, on some of that stuff whenever we do that at a work session. Um, but I don't really have an update on the feasibility.
Still up.
I am still up. Um, so budget update, I don't really have an update on actual numbers, because I'm not closing out FY '25 until October, until after August 31st. That's because the sales tax money we get in August technically belongs to FY '25. Um, so once that is done, um, then I will close out the fiscal year, and in September, you will get an update on where we end, where we ended with revenue expenditures, what carryover's going to need to be, um, addressed, and all of that stuff, um, so you'll get that update in September. Um, I will provide you an update as far as the conversations between us and the county and our EDIs and our bank account and all of that. our EDIs and our bank account and all of that stuff. Dr. Martin, myself, Mr. Bowen, Ms. Rayford, and Ms. Presley, make sure I get her last name right, we all met, sat down, talked about the pros and the cons of, of every type of option we could. At the end of the day, we did come up, we are keeping our bank accounts. Money will still flow into our bank accounts, but the flow of money will change. So we are going to give the EDIs back to the county. That should be in effect September 15th. I have already provided the stuff with the state. Ms. Rayford will then transfer that money to us. She will copy Dr. Martin and myself on the email where she requests the transfer, just so we know when it, when it's done. And she's actually already done that once when she transferred sales tax money. She hasn't had to transfer anything else yet. All communications to her, as far as all reports and information that she needs, is coming directly from me. So I'm going through it, verifying, you know, what it is, I mean, I still miss things here and there, but trying to streamline some processes with her, making sure that she's able to reconcile her stuff that she needs, because we had already fixed the reconciliation process with the county administration office. So now we're working on fixing that. So we came to a mutually agreed upon that we can all work with, we can all manage, because we still, at the end of the day, we maintain our bank account, we maintain paying our payroll, paying our bills, and being able to do initially what we wanted to do, which was to pay our bills and our, and our payroll, and not have to worry about paying it out of a county bank account, we're able to pay it out of our own. So that's where we're at with that. As of right now, everything seems very cohesive between everybody, and we hope that that will maintain that. But if it doesn't, or if anything changes, we will absolutely bring that to you. But that's my budget update for this evening.
I will add, just, and I didn't have this for Heather earlier, but just some enrollment numbers, so you know, because this will affect budget. Now, I do want you to keep in mind, we're very fluid right now because we haven't started yet, and those could fluctuate. So just so you know, that, I'm going to give you the ending year numbers first for '24, '25, and then I'm going to give you what we are projecting as of today, what we're seeing, what the schools are seeing in enrollment, and what we have waiting in our enrollment school that we haven't gotten to yet. So last year, and this is the report that went to the state for '24, '25, the enrollment, and I want you to keep in mind, this is not ADM, because ADM is what budget is based off of, this is enrollment. So as long, we want enrollment to be as high as possible continuously. We finished the year with 1769, and that was at the high school, 502, the middle school, 261, the intermediate school, 270, Blackstone, 365, and Crew, 371. And I will email these to you as well, so that you will have them after, yes, as well as the presentations, I will email those to you after. That's where we were at the end of last year. For '25, '26, right now, very fluid numbers. High school is 503, middle school is 276, intermediate school is 261, Blackstone is 367, Crew is 367, which gives us enrollment of 1774. But we have 42 students sitting in the enrollment school that we're still going through paperwork on, so that, we house them in the school that we got to get their paperwork and stuff, so we have 42. So when you add those numbers in, we're at 1816, which is great, to be starting higher. We want to start as high as possible, 1816. That's six sitting in the enrollment school for the high school, three for the middle school, eight for the intermediate school, nine for Blackstone, and 16 for Crew right now, in the enrollment school. To the point that, you have the names presented for you, we have to add two kindergarten teachers, because we're over numbers. That's why you are seeing some additional names tonight, because, one, we cannot risk losing our class reduction funds. Both schools, we normally would not do this this early, but we feel very confident at both of their schools where their enrollment numbers are sitting for kindergarten, and I don't know about you, but I don't want to be a kindergarten teacher with 25 kids in a classroom. And let me remind you, on the first day of school, they're not five, they're four, when they come in. Our class reduction numbers are at 20 and 21, I believe, for them. With the numbers that we have, we have to add two additional teachers there.
Both schools?
One to each school, a teacher at each school. We will fund it this year, of course, we're going through salary savings and where we're moving funds. Worst-case scenario, we can fund from our textbook for a one-year thing, you know, to sustain, and then we can move where we need to do. So we're very confident in that. But it's great to know our enrollment numbers are increasing again. Now, there's going to be some that fluctuate and go in and out, and like I said, we look at what's taking, takes seat on the first day, and we get updates every day for the first two, three weeks of school to know where we are, and things start to level out. But every day, they're getting new enrollments in their buildings, and like, okay, let's, let's figure out what we need to do. But like I said, the kindergarteners are starting to, they're coming from everywhere now, so, just so you have some perspective, and I'll send you these numbers, too, because that will play in as we start talking about budget. Yep.
Thank you. ANT C report, Mr. Outlaw.
Off to another really good start at ANT C, thanks to Ms. Slidzinski. They had a really huge open house the other day, welcome back to school event, with 107 in attendance to that, which I think is almost all of the enrollment, which, that's very good. The participation and excitement level is very high. The carpentry class is up and running. One of the big events there is to put a mini-split, which is a small heating and air conditioning, a heat pump, in, and that's, that's all done. And, did I miss anyone?
Today was our first day.
All right.
We had a, almost a 90% turnout, including, like, from Nodaway and Amelia, so, which is excellent, considering we started a week ahead of you guys.
That's very good.
It's up 100% from last year.
And I went in there the other day, and we, we got two people, actually more than that, with Mrs. Slidzinski. I don't know where most of the paint was, on what she was painting or on... So dedication, dedication, and something needs doing, she jumps right in and does it.
Very good.
Thank you. The governor's school, Ms. Duncan.
Sorry, I had to reread my notes. We had our meeting on 7/23, 25. We did have a reorganization meeting, all, and members stayed the same. All invited attendees has been accepted. They did have to utilize four alternates. Nodaway was unable to fill all of their slots this year. Now, we do pay for slots regardless of, and if I'm incorrect, I want to be corrected, but regardless of usage, we still pay for those slots, but we did not fill all of ours. We cannot change our slots without a two-year notice prior, but I don't anticipate that being an issue in the future. There was a tuition increase for the college of an additional $4.90 per credit hours. We have created, well, they created, I did not take part in this, but there was a strategic plan that has now been created, has been adopted. And through the funding that they have, 130 new iPads, through the VPSA state funds have been purchased, security checked, locked up. And they did this because it made it difficult with our system communicating with the college's system, so they felt it would be better just to supply with iPads, so then that way they can go ahead and be successful in their work. And I don't have it, I wasn't able to grab hold of it this time, but I do have a very nice ad that our governor's school has been publicized in, so I'd like to, next month, present that, so then that way they can see it.
And SEAC report, Ms. Duncan.
There's nothing new on that front as of yet. Meeting dates have not been publicized as of yet. As always, it is open to the public in general, and members with children with IEPs are invited, public with children with IEPs are invited to be members of the Special Education Advisory Committee.
Very good. And superintendent's report, Dr. Martin.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, so, this evening, I want to highlight the amazing support we have as we've started this school year, and, or as it's getting ready to start. I mean, it's been busy, to say the least, but it's been exciting for us. It's, it's one of the few places that you get to, to start over every year and welcome new people in and start fresh, so the new year's always exciting. But last week, we welcomed an amazing group of new staff to our schools. We're excited about each one of them joining our family. They were here last week. The only new staff that were not able to be here yet are our teachers coming from the Philippines, the EPI. They have been some delays in visas, but they're all set, they're here, they will be here ready to go. I think they're supposed to finally be on site August of 27th, so we are opening with some long-term subs in some places until they, they get here and get situated, but the schools have done a fantastic job of having a backup plan in place. I even think some of those teachers sent video messages that were shared this evening with the parents, because they could not be there this evening, but wanted to welcome their students to their classroom for when they arrived. So very eager to get here and to get, get started. This week, we welcomed the rest of what I call our family back. I don't look at it as staff, I look at it truly as our Nodaway family, so we welcomed them back for the '25, '26 year. I have to tell you that we have the best staff around. I don't think you would find a better dedicated staff. They're phenomenal in what they do each and every day. They hit the ground running at each school, and they are ready to welcome students next week. There's a strong commitment to setting the bar high and the commitment to our work that we have. It's been visible in our community partnerships, our teachers and our staff, our families, our board, and our central office staff. So I cannot say enough about our admin team, from principals to assistant principals to supervisors, to central office staff, their dedication, their commitment. They've gotten expectations, they've communicated those expectations through their departments, through athletics, across the board, in all areas that we have high expectations and that we are holding people accountable for, for what we say and what we, we do. So I have to say a huge thank you tonight to our maintenance staff and our custodial staff. They have been dedicated to ensuring that schools are ready, walls are shiny, the walls have been painted, they've had to clean walls, so if they weren't painted by the outside company, they've been wiping down walls, different things. They've cleared the grounds, they've cleaned, they have reclaimed due to just various work and floods, whatever else comes along, raining in the buildings, whatever it may be. So, I mean, they have cleaned and they have reclaimed, and they have done it without complaining. The maintenance staff has, has gone wherever we needed to do, they've stopped a project. Today, for example, they had to stop what they were doing and go to Crew Primary, like, because we needed hands-on deck there. So I cannot say enough about the work that they have done. They have worked on weekends, they have worked at night to get the projects completed, and it's been a team effort to ensure that the best is in place for our staff and our students as we open school next week. We had a fantastic turnout on Monday night for our parking lot party. I think it grows every year with the local support, and each year, we wrap a few more hot dogs, I think. And they just keep going, and, you know, we have some hot dog wrappers that we need to train on how to, to speed up the process a little bit there. But, you know, it's always had a system now for working in concession stands, and we know how to wrap really quick, but we wrap a few more hot dogs each and every year, I think, and they never seem to stop. But it's amazing to see our families in our community come out and support the school division together with that work. Again, the admin team, they're there, your principals, your central office team, our APs aren't here, and some of our supervisors aren't here, but they have done an amazing job. I have to say kudos to each of them for their dedication to their building, their hard work that they do, and they're there each and every day, long hours past it, and there, there's nothing less than amazing. We have a really good admin team working together. So that commitment that they have. I will tell you that our division leadership did something a little bit different this year. We've been doing school readiness walks. So as a team, Dr. Gravely, Ms. Meyer, Dr. Lewis, Dr. Greger, and myself have gone to each of our buildings. We finished up with Crew and Blackstone today, but we have walked with the principals of the buildings and the APs. We have looked at every component of readiness while we are there, from the cleanliness of the building, to ceiling tiles that need to be replaced, to nooks and crannies that we need to go back and clean, to HR needs, to student services needs, to bus dismissal process. I think that they can tell me something different, and they can tell you something different. I think that each principal found that valuable. I hope that we were there side by side, walking with them, having the conversation as to what their needs are. Central office knows, they've been told frequently, we're here to serve, we're here to serve our, our schools and our staff and be visible, and those walks will continue in those buildings, and we will be visible in the buildings to help support them. With it, we happened to be at Crew Primary when it all was happening today, so we were there hands-on to support him and his, his custodial crew, and so we could see firsthand what was, was going on. And then we went to Blackstone and finished up the school readiness walk there. So we have a list of projects, we followed up, and that way we can make sure they have everything they need for the first day of school. And then finally, oh, well, I may be, maybe other people aren't, but we're super excited about convocation tomorrow. I mean, you know, I don't know about them, but I think across the division, people are pretty excited. It's a little bit different this year, because it's about celebrating our staff. Our convocation is truly this year about celebrating our staff and the work that they do, and the commitment that they have to Nodaway County Public Schools, and the work that we have to do as we enter the new school year. So as we prep and complete our final touches for the new year, again, you see it on the buildings, we are Nodaway, and we're committed to excellence, and that's my superintendent's report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Martin. Matters of school board interest, August 15th, convocations. If you didn't know, it starts at 10:30. That's in the morning.
And it starts at 10:30. So you're a few minutes early.
It starts at 10:30. August 27th will be a work session. September 11th will be the Military Appreciation Night at the stadium, starts at 6, Plymouth at 6, game starts at 7. We have moved the traditional meeting from September 11th to the 18th. I did ask at one time if there was a better date, because the 18th is also the Board of Supervisors. I didn't get a, an alternate date, but, so, the 18th is currently standing. September 19th is the VSBA Legislative Advocacy Center, in person or visually, if you've signed up for that. 24th will be a work session. The 30th is the Fall Superintendent Evaluation Workshop, if you haven't attended one. They have made some minor modifications. October 22nd will be a work session. There aren't any currently planned in November and December. We'll go to other. Let's start with Mr. Rowe.
Nothing at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes. I want to shout out Nodaway. I had a, I'm not going to call the division name, but a young person lived in this county, and she brought her child here under you, Dr. Martin, at, when you was at the intermediate school. The reason why she brought it here, because the child couldn't read. So she brought her here, and the child is doing very, very well. I'd shout you out for that, because that's, that's great. So, and then I had somebody that's come from a bigger division, and basically the same thing. So what's, what's your, what's your motto?
We are Nodaway, committed to excellence.
Let's keep the excellence going, because I want, I really want this, and I think this whole board wants this school to shine. We want to be the light on the hill, because there are good reports, I heard, I'm probably saying... because there are good reports I heard, I'm probably saying this wrong, but top people saying bad things about the school. And I'm not happy about none of that. So, you guys keep doing what you're doing and do that excellent thing. That's all.
That's right.
Thank you, Chair.
Ms. Duncan?
Yes. One of the things that I wanted to say is, I had a conversation with somebody, and they were critiquing some of the engagements that Nottaway has been doing lately. And their response was, well, we tried to do this before and it just never worked. They had some other remarks. And I replied to them that that was then, that this is today, and that you cannot change unless you allow change. And they took that and, I call it, digested it, and they come back later and they said, you know, you're right. You know, you have to give something an opportunity to work before it will work. And that's what I wanted to implore the parents, the publics, the other Nottaway officials. We want to see it grow. I do see growth. And be part of the change, not part of the hindrance.
That's probably the problem. Thank you. Mr. Outlaw?
Nothing tonight.
I have just a couple of things. Dr. Martin covered a number of the activities. I was fortunate enough, along with Mr. Outlaw, to attend the Bright Spot, Starbright, Starbase cutting. And while there, got to have a discussion about some of the things that are going on to the county with some of the other divisions from surrounding communities. We, Mr. Outlaw and I were also able to attend both sessions of the teacher training. And I'll be the first to admit that when I walked into the building, you would have thought that there was something else going on. There were cheerleaders lining the hall. There were little lights and a red carpet as people, I mean, these are new employees that were coming in and being cheered as they were coming down the hallway. Everything went beautifully. I, I mean, I don't know how else to say it. To watch the expressions on new people's faces, because I'm confident that they did not expect that kind of welcoming activity for those two days. And part of that first day training was a session on bullying, which was extremely interesting from my standpoint. I wasn't the only one that attended the awards activity that brought together the businesses and the students. Mr. Outlaw was also there. And the, the parking lot party. Dr. Martin mentioned wrapping hot dogs. You get, I didn't get to wrap any. I'll be the first to admit that. I had a tough time keeping up, getting the buns out of the bag, so that they could put them in, the hot dog in the bun. And we went through one thousand hot dogs.
Wow.
In addition, there was a substantial number of backpacks that were given out. And I can, I only have one other parking lot party to gauge against, and that was last year against this year. And this year was dramatically larger. More people, more activities. But there wasn't one person that's in this room today that wasn't doing something at that gathering. And there wasn't one person giving everybody else directions. Everybody was just pitching in and doing the kinds of things that needed to be done to make it a success. I was extremely fortunate to be able to be there, and my wife showed up, and she even joined in trying to figure out how to do a little something for the school system.
She's an excellent hot dog wrapper.
I was fortunate in that there's a lot going on, you can feel it. All you have to do is walk into any one building. If you get more than another person with you, you can feel that there's a, there's an ebb and flow of change for the positive in Nottaway County. I can only hope that the Board of Supervisors recognizes that. Amen. And that they're, they, they have figured out that revenue isn't necessarily a problem. Sometimes it's spending. Having said that, I'll ask for the closed resolution. Motion, please.
Pursuant to section 2.2-3711A of the Code of Virginia, I move that the board convene a closed meeting for the purpose of discussing the following specific matters. A1, the consideration of personnel for 14 appointments, two food service workers, four substitute teachers, one head volleyball coach, one assistant football coach, one assistant girls' basketball coach, one temporary instructor, fifth grade, one custodian, one instructional assistant, one temporary instructor, kindergarten, and one EPI instructor, elementary, one salary adjustment, one instructional coach, and one termination, sixth-grade English teacher.
You've heard the motion. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are in closed.